Okay, Mayor, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Amy. I'd like to call tonight's meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council to order. Today is Thursday, March 11th, 2021. And with that, would you please post the flag? And if everybody would unmute their microphones and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're getting better. Amy, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bruins?
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Here.
And Mayor Miller?
Here.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Sunday, March 14th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. And this meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
Thank you. With that, I'd move approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
It's a motion by Daniels, second by Middleton. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
And Mayor Miller?
Aye. The agenda is approved. Let's move on to the next item, please.
Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Okay. Councilmember Bruins, would you go first, please?
Sure. So, Regional SAN met this week, and it was a pretty short meeting. Just some updates on reports. And we were basically moving into a transition time as our general manager, Prabakar Somarapu, is heading out for retirement between now and the end of the year. And so, we've got, I'm sitting on a committee to work on the recruiting process for his replacement. So, we reported out on that. Also attended the PAL board meeting yesterday. And our, it was a relatively short meeting just because of COVID. There's not a lot of activities going on, but they're really doing a great job in staying as connected as possible with the kids. And had a report on the STAKE program, which is the grant that we got for education about the hazards of vaping. And the grant also included putting surveillance in the restrooms at the junior high school so that we can discourage kids from vaping and smoking. So, that's that. We continue to move forward, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to open up the next few months to have live activities for the kids. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeanne. Councilmember Daniels?
Thank you very much. Had a good meeting with the air board. Talked a little bit about public-private partnerships with zero emission vehicles. So, some collaborations on that stuff. Talked a little bit about the SECOG Green Means Go. And that's something that all of our SECOG representatives give us a briefing about when the time is right. There is also, for the business community out there, they're conducting a wildfire-smoke-pollution-event-response-plan survey. So, when we had our wildfires a little while back, I think they're trying to work to get something together so that things go a little smoother when that happens again, because we all know it probably will. And then talked a little bit about a place that's coming together. It's called the Del Paso Mobility Hub. It's an $850,000 investment by the Air District, and it'll fund things such as cars, shuttle buses, and et cetera. Next up, I would like to talk about the Citrus Heights PD and some recent interactions I've had with some homeless issues and stuff like that. Amazing responses, incredible responses. Proud to be in this city and be able to have police officers respond quickly to situations. And on top of that, just some other law enforcement-related issues across social media, such as tonight when the helicopter was over Mesa Verde. And information put out right away by Citrus Heights PD and critical information of when the suspect was caught. That really puts people to ease. So, I'm very proud to see them do that. And I think that's a great thing for us to be able to connect to the community immediately. And not only look for, you know, reach out for help, but also to put them at ease when the situation is resolved. So, good work there. Recently got something from the Sunrise Marketplace district, and it involved the ability to fill out what is called a trespass letter and that our police department can have available so that if a business owner is not reachable, but they think there's a situation involving somebody on their property, it gives the police, the city, the right to remove that person from that property. A lot of times, there's frustration because there's a situation that's going on. Maybe a camp has been set up on private property and whatnot, or there's just people there that shouldn't, don't seem to, that they should be there. And our hands are tied in the sense of we can't just come along and make somebody leave private property. So, I would encourage people within the business community to reach out to the police department or go through the marketplace for those that are up in that area and find out a little bit more about that. I'm going to post that on my Facebook page. There's an application for it. There is a process to do that, and you have to update it depending on the circumstances, either every 30 days or every six months. And so, that's a great tool. That is a great tool for the police to be able to come onto a property and be able to take care of things when that owner or manager's not available. And then my final thing, schools are opening, it looks like. And hopefully sooner than later. There is, we're right at that point. We're up to the line. And hopefully, something happens with the silly tier, colored tier thing. And if we move to red, I believe it is, then we will open sooner. But if not, hopefully, it looks like at least by April. And I can't tell you how happy I am to hear that because there is just incredible frustration and I think incredible damage being done to our children by not having them in schools. So, I think we're there finally. That's it.
Thank you, Brett. Thank you for refreshing everybody's mind about the trespass. It's been a real successful tool over the years. And I think over time, people forget about that. So, thanks for bringing that up. Councilmember Schaefer, what have you been up to?
Well, thank you, Mayor. So, first of all, I'd also like to sort of jump on Brett's coattails in praising the Citrus Heights Police Department. I've experienced lots of people calling me and complaining about traffic in my neighborhood. I was delighted to see the traffic unit out there slowing people down and encouraging people to follow the laws. And also, I'd like to thank Officer Seth Semino for his effort in really dealing with the homeless. Homeless are, is a very difficult thing to deal with, and he does it amazingly well. I also attended a meeting in Sundance Park, which is part of the Arcade Creek Trail project, with Leslie Blumquist and Casey Campanar. The residents there were, had some concerns, and I was just proud to see how Leslie and Casey handled that and very respectful, and yet, at the same time, explaining that FEMA has restrictions, so does Caltrans with regard to the improvement of the bridge in that park. So, again, it was a very educational experience for me. And like I said, delighted to see Leslie and Casey, how they conducted themselves in, at times, in adverse conditions. So, I also had SAC Metro Cable TV Commission meeting. So, Matt Hedges, Sue Frost Chief of Staff, Supervisor Sue Frost, is now the chair for the Sacramento Cable TV Commission. It was actually my first meeting, and I actually got elected to vice chair, which surprised me. But nonetheless, here we are. I'm not sure, not sure why that would be, but nonetheless. So, one of the other things that I've been doing lately, and it's really a well-done event. Dignity Health has been conducting vaccine clinics for COVID-19. I attended and volunteered for a, to work five and a half hours over at Del Campo High School. Incredibly well-run event. We vaccinated about 2,700 people in nine hours. And if you do the math, that's turning out a vaccinated person about every 12 and a half seconds, which is just an amazing. There was no waiting, meaning that you had to go in and get your vaccination and then sit for 15 or 20 minutes. But there were so many stations and so many places to sit that it was really moving really nicely through there. The only limitation for that was the amount of space that was available for where people could sit and be observed. So, that was a little bit of a concern. There were still about 300 people outside that kind of, we couldn't process through because the room was too small. So, they are seeking volunteers. I got a request. It was pretty, kind of a lot, a big ask. They were asking folks to volunteer every day for 30 days. The projection is that I think pretty much anybody who wants to be vaccinated will probably be vaccinated by the end of May. So, that was another really positive experience. And I would encourage anybody that is interested in volunteering for the vaccine clinic. Like I said, it's a very, at least the Dignity Health one, is a very well-run organization. They really, when I did it, they were on their fifth time around. I'm also volunteering on Sunday. And so, I will continue to volunteer as I have time that's available to do that because I think it's a very worthwhile cause. One of the things that I want to also recognize is homeless advocate Alfred Sanchez had a birthday yesterday. Happy birthday, Alfred. And he, for his birthday, he is running a sock drive for the homeless. And Grocery Outlet there at Greenback and Auburn Boulevard will be collecting socks through the end of the month for Alfred's cause. So, I would encourage you, if you shop at Grocery Outlet or you want to donate, it's a good, great cause. Alfred works tirelessly with these folks. And it's, like I said before, it is very challenging. It's a challenging job to do that, but he does that out of the goodness of his heart. So, with that, we've got new, nice weather coming up. I think the spring is about to be sprung. And let's get out and enjoy the weather. And try to stop by the Sunrise Mall. It's actually quite a pleasant experience to shop there. And really, I'm sure they would appreciate your business there. So, with that, that's about all I had. Thank you, Mary, and thank you.
Thanks, Tim. And as time goes by, you'll learn with some of these boards that you've got to say "not it" a little quicker. Or take a step back quicker. With that, move on to Vice Mayor Middleton.
Thank you, Mayor. So, over the past weeks, we had a SECOG and CalCities meeting. At the SECOG meeting, the topics all revolved around Green Means Go, housing, and federal aid to local governments, which seems to be, as of today, going to be coming to our city, which we're really excited about. And for those of us who have advocated, we appreciate all your words of support to our congressman to make sure that we get the aid that we need in our community. And with Green Means Go, we're actually going up there. We're writing letters to our governor. You can go to secog.org and put in a letter to talk about why we need funding for green projects around our area. Citrus Heights is actually a green zone. And so, it would really help us if we have people talking about making carve-outs in our state budget to make sure our projects are fully funded. And with CalCities, we talked about housing. We are constantly talking about housing because there are several bills that are coming out that deal with zoning, density, and all those other types of things. And we're making sure that those are going to actually benefit our local communities. And I am there advocating to make sure that we're doing things that make sense for Citrus Heights. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Portia. And for my report on regional transit this past Monday, the biggest item was a non-action item. That was an update on negotiations with the city of Elk Grove to annex into RT. That would be the final city to do so. If you recall, Citrus Heights did it a few years ago, and Folsom joined Citrus Heights. And this will go a long way to obtaining grants for the region when all the member agencies are actually part of regional transit rather than contracting with. Tonight, I had the pleasure of speaking with the Orange Vale Recreation and Park District Board about the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail. And I was joined by our city engineer, Leslie Blumquist, and planning manager, Casey Campanar, who did a more detailed overview of the trail, especially where it impacted Orange Vale. And I had to leave that meeting early, but I'm glad we were able to reach out and continue our collaboration with our neighboring park district and communities. With that, oh, Portia, you brought up federal aid. I have a meeting with our Congressman Amy Barra tomorrow, and we're going to talk about that and see exactly what this means. Fingers crossed, nothing for sure, but we're keeping our eye on the ball. And with that, I'd like to move on to the next item. Thank you.
The next item is public comment. And members of the public may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. If you wish to address the council during the Zoom meeting, please use the raise hand function or star nine from a telephone to indicate your desire to speak. I do, Mayor, have one written public comment that I will read first for general public comment. Then I also have a public comment for item nine, which I will read when we get to item nine.
Okay, thank you.
So, with that, I'll read the written comment first. The written comment is from David Warren. Some council members have demanded the reopening of businesses and churches during this pandemic. At the same time, residents are prohibited from in-person attendance at council meetings. Although a year ago advocating a super-spreader event of any type was an oxymoron, the current rapid decline of infection in conjunction with significant vaccination rates demands that council meetings return to in-person access. With appropriate safety measures in place with concurrent internet accessibility for the public, seating at council meetings should be divided into two sections. One for individuals who can provide evidence of vaccination at least 10 weekdays prior to attending the meeting, along with a separate 25% limited seating section for individuals not vaccinated, along with a mandatory mask policy. The council chambers and adjacent spillover spaces available in City Hall. Public access for in-person comment to government hearings is an absolute necessity for good government. Internet viewing is not the same as attending in person to allow spontaneous comments by the public in response, not only to what is said during a meeting, but also to what the public sees in the faces of other commenters, staff, as well as council members. If the state legislator can permit public attendance at committee meetings and council members can demand that restaurants and other public venues reopen, there is no possible excuse for refusing to hold council meetings open to the public with appropriate safety protocols. The public's comments should not be delivered in dispassionate tones. Instead, by a citizen's concerned voice. And that is the only written comment. And I do-
While you're looking for any hands up, I couldn't agree more with Mr. Warren's comments. We do have to wait for the state to allow us to open our chambers to the public. I see that happening in the next few months. And the vaccinations are happening right now. So, that's good. And we do have contingency plans when we're ready to open. I can't wait. But it's like a magnet. The closer you get, the harder it pulls. And we'll do our best to get open back up as everybody gets vaccinated. We build our herd immunity.
And I do not currently see any hands raised.
Okay. Well, if there's no other comments, we can move on to the next item, please.
The next item is consent calendar items four, five, six, and seven.
And I entertain a motion for the consent calendar?
Move approval? Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bruins, seconded by Vice Mayor Middleton. Amy, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
And Mayor Miller?
Aye. Okay. Any public hearings? No, it looks like we're on the regular calendar, Amy.
Yes. So, the next item is regular calendar, item number eight. The subject is Construction Board of Appeals appointments. And the recommendation is that the city council, by majority vote, appoint individuals for the two remaining at-large appointments to the Construction Board of Appeals.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and city council members. Haley Reed, management analyst with the city clerk's office. Three Construction Board of Appeals appointments expired on December 31st, 2020. And at the January 14th city council meeting, council made one appointment for the board from an application received by the city clerk's office. Since that meeting, the clerk's office has received two additional applications. And city council received a memo on February 22nd, along with the two applications received by James Cowgirr and Suzanne Fagundez. And those applicants have been notified of this meeting if they wish to address the council.
Thanks, Haley. Are they, Mr. Cowgirr or Ms. Fagundes wish to speak?
If they wish to speak. I don't know that they're in attendance. I don't see, and I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, well, thanks for checking. What's the pleasure of-
Then with that-
Oh, go ahead, Haley.
Oh, yeah. So, with that, staff recommends the city council, by majority vote, appoint individuals for the two remaining at-large appointments to the Construction Board of Appeals. And that's it.
Okay, now I'll ask, what's the pleasure of the council?
I'll move staff's recommendation. Second, for the appointment.
There's a motion by Bruins, a second by Middleton. I want to say all those in favor, but we've got to call the roll.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
And Mayor Miller?
Aye. Congratulations to Jamie and Suzanne. This is a tough assignment. I hope you make us proud.
The next item is regular calendar, item number nine. The subject is Approval of Economic Development Support Fund for the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving a $10,000 sponsorship to the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce from the Economic Development Support Fund, Part One.
Good evening, Mayor Miller and members of city council. I am Megan Huber, Economic Development and Communications Manager for the city of Citrus Heights. Bringing an agenda item before you this evening, a request for sponsorship from our Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce through our Economic Development Support Fund, Part One. As a reminder, we do have this pot of funds available specifically to utilize in partnership with economic development organizations and activities that further our goals of diversifying our local economy and growing our business community. These funds are first come, first served. And the period that we're talking about this evening that the sponsorship would fall under is fiscal year 2020, 2021. So, with an end date of June 30th, 2021. So, with that, I will do some quick review of this sponsorship request. We have partnered with our Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce for the past six years on annual sponsorship. And that is a Diamond Sponsor level. It includes engaging as a partner through things like sponsoring monthly luncheons, coffee connections, partnering on marketing assets, including e-news and social media, and really just working together to support our business community. So, staff does recommend approval. This has been reviewed by Finance Committee, recommending approval as well. And this is for you for consideration this evening. And with that, I would like to invite Diane Abbott Reilly-Fordward, the Executive Director of the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce, to share more information about the organization and what the year looks like.
Welcome, Diane.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Megan. Yes, I would like to share with you what the chamber has done and our accomplishments in 2020. So, let me see if I can bring up our PowerPoint. Do you see it?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. Okay, I show it up.
In Zoom, can you click on the shares screen?
Okay, here we go. Sure.
There it is.
All right. Okay. I just lost it. I'm sorry. There we go. Okay. So, the chamber's goals and objectives for 2020. The objectives were to increase membership, hire an executive director, increase member participation at events, increase communication with our members, increase number of board of directors, and create a signature event for the chamber. Then COVID hit and just turned our world upside down. However, I want to let you know that the chamber did not turn upside down. Now, I'm going to tell you some of the things that the chamber did to balance out COVID. First, they hired an interim executive director, me. And I started on April 15th. We increased communication to our members. We did COVID-19 weekly updates from the county. And we always included the city website links on all of our updates. We started sending out weekly online newsletters. We increased our chamber membership, 31 new members during COVID. Average five new members per month, which is the largest average increase in two years. The following is a list of some of the businesses that have joined since April. Birdcage Village Apartments, Texas Roadhouse, Maida Hyundai, Walmart Neighborhood Market, Green Acres Nursery and Supply. Renee has been out there working very hard, and she has done a fantastic job with this, with our membership. Now, I'd like to share with you the stats for 2020. When we sent out the updates, we averaged an open rate of 26%. May 8th was our first weekly online newsletter with an average open rate of 20%, and that's climbed to about 21%, 22%. April 14th was our first virtual lunch meeting with 19 RSVPs. Our last lunch meeting, I believe, we had almost 50 RSVPs. April 28th, the first coffee connection, we had 27 RSVPs. October 7th was our first in-person event, and we had county and city approval. And that was a base mask contest at Beach Hut Deli. 20 of our members attended. And then, we have increased our board of directors from nine to 13. So, basically, what we have done is we have met all of our objectives, except for what? And we're working on that one. Our city partnerships. Partnership with the city to provide two SBDC webinars for the Paycheck Protection Program Funds and how to apply for COVID-19 Small Business Funds. With Megan's help, we were able to put on two in 2020, and we have put another one on this year already. We partnered with the city to distribute 1,200 Love Local Window Plings, and that's still in the process. Every time Renee goes out or our ambassadors go out, they take the decals and they talk to different businesses and ask them to please display the decals. It's a little frustrating because some of the corporate, well, we have to ask for permission- well, we have to ask for permission first, but that's okay. We partnered with the city to educate and remind businesses of the recycle regulations for businesses, and in fact, our luncheon, March, uh, the city was the speaker on that. And then we partnered with the city to share the Learn Local video campaign. We're still working on that. These are our events for twenty twenty-one. We already held the first one on February eighteenth, and that was a rally to reopen California. We had Speaker Sue Frost, Jack Frost, and Kevin Kiley, along with some of the small business owners in Citrus Heights. And this was just to give them a voice, just to say, hey, please, hear our, hear our voice. We want to reopen. March twelfth, which is tomorrow night, we have our Community Appreciation Awards via Facebook. We will honor, uh, Police Officer of the Year, Firefighter of the Year, and our own Mayor Steve Miller has said a few words. Best of Citrus Heights voting starts April first and ends May thirty-first. And then on June eighth, our lunch then, we will announce the winners for the Best of Citrus Heights. Of course, we're hoping by then we can meet in person, but if not, we will definitely do it over Zoom. May twenty-second, this is so exciting. It's our drive-in concert. Now, this is all tentative. We are still waiting for the health approval from the county. It has been submitted, and it looks good so far. But if it, if everything goes right, it's going to be Sunrise Mall. The band is journey revisited. And what's exciting about this is all the money that is raised from that program. The money will go into a grant, and then it will be given back to the businesses that have been affected by COVID-nineteen. The most they can get is going to be two thousand, but we're hoping to raise about fifteen thousand dollars in that. August nineteenth is going to be our Elected Officials Mixer from four PM to six PM. Again, we don't know if it's in person or Zoom. And of course, all of our council members are invited to attend. On October ninth, this is going to be another fun and great event, and that's our cornhole tournament. The time and place is still to be determined, but a portion of the funds will go to the PAL program. Our community involvement. Donations have been made to Single Mom Strong. We did a canned food drive for Sayonara Center. Uh, we joined the Rotary Club of Citrus Heights as corporate members so that we can give back to the community. And I will tell you that the chamber will be helping back, will be helping with the, um, holiday referral program with Rotary. We, uh, promote, we promoted Republic Services Photo Contest. We promoted Metro Fire, twenty twenty Fire Prevention Poster Contest. And we support Heart, and I am on the Board for Heart, and have been for two years. That's it. Are there any questions?
Any questions of, uh, Diane? I will say this, uh, Diane. The fact that you've been advocating and fighting for our small businesses kind of explains why during COVID you've had an increase in membership and interest. And I will say this about Love Local. If you need something like a transmission, go to the chamber's website and find the members that do transmissions and patronize them, please. Uh, and this goes for any kind of service. They, uh, they run the gamut from tax preparation to, let, let's, uh, take care of our, our businesses, uh, and, and help everybody get back on their feet. And with that, are there any questions?
I'd just like to make a comment. I just want to, um, applaud the chamber and Diane in particular for the turnaround they've done in the last year of, of the chamber. And, um, ever since you've been on board, the, the contrast has been significant. The communication is a thousandfold. Um, you keep us informed about what's going on with the chamber. You, uh, regularly and diligently promote your members, and I just want to say hats off. The chamber is looking better than it's looked in a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say that it's great working with the city. And Megan Huber and I, we meet every other Monday at three o'clock, and we discuss and update each other on what's happening. And it's a pleasure working with her.
Any other questions or comments for Diane?
Uh, Diane, I just want to emphasize again what Jeannie said. Wonderful, wonderful work. I am so happy to see the chamber alive and bustling again. It's really getting me excited about what's going to happen once we're actually able to get back to business, right?
Yes, yes, thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone.
We ready to?
Thanks, Diane. Um, and with that, any other discussion? Or I would entertain a motion?
Uh, Mayor, I just wanted to remind you that we did have a one public comment. That was a written public comment.
Thank you so much for reminding me.
So I will go.
Would you read it, please?
I will go ahead and read the public comment from David Warren. "In light of the city manager's recent doomsday forecast of the city's budget due to the failure to increase municipal sales tax rates, it is hypocritical that any payment, no matter how purportedly meritorious of municipal funds, would be made to the Chamber of Commerce. The one hundred and fifty thousand allocated to the Economic Development Support Fund would easily pay for, by way of example, deferred street repairs, the salary of a municipal employee or all or part of a police officer position, each of which are far more important to residents than, than the Chamber of Commerce. The City Council must, in light of how the city manager has described the future budget instability, begin immediately to direct all discretionary revenue to maintain municipal activities and cease funding ancillary activities, no matter how meritorious they may be. By way of, of example, the Chamber of Commerce does not provide police services, road repairs, or any other of the numerous municipal services. California Chamber of Commerce does not receive an appropriation from the state of California, which begs the question, why should the Citrus Heights Chamber ask for a government subsidy? As advocates of private enterprise, the chamber members should follow their own philosophy and be self-supporting. Until the city's budget recovers, all funds in the Economic Development Support Fund, as well as similar discretionary funds, must be redirected to maintaining our current level of municipal services. If the city has to tighten its belt, it should not be on the backs of our employees."
Well, I'm going to comment on that letter. Um, I don't think that Mr. Warren, um, recognizes the positive impact and will lead to greater revenues to, to the city that the chamber makes on behalf of the business community. And so, um, I would therefore, um, move that we approve this allocation. It's not a subsidy, it's a sponsorship. We get benefits, uh, in return for the economic, um, investment we make in the business community through the Chamber of Commerce. So I, um, move that we approve a resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, approving ten thousand dollar sponsorship to the Chamber of Commerce from the Economic Development Fund, Support Fund, Part One.
Motion from Bruins?
Second.
A second from Middleton?
I have a comment. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question for Megan. This is Tim Schaefer.
Yes, Tim.
Yes, hi, Megan, how are you? Uh, so, uh, this, i- is it true that the, the economic, uh, this fund is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so, uh, how often do, do, does that get expended every year? Or does a portion of that only get spent? Or is it, is it something that gets turned over every year? Or is it just a, just kind of, it's out there? We spend ten thousand here and ten thousand there, and it's kind of, the same money stays there?
Uh, I would say it's, uh, so the fund is, uh, an annual replenishment from the general fund. However, after having switched to the, um, two-year budget, there is an opportunity for rollover within that period. In terms of usage, we do have a couple of consistent requests. And those are annual memberships, uh, with the Citrus Heights Chamber as well as the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. And then, uh, past that, uh, just based on my recollection, I can't, um, I can't think of anything else that would be consistent. So past that, it would be first, first, first come, first served, um, based on, um, how we can potentially partner with economic development organizations and activities. Uh, the guidelines are, uh, very specifically designed to be able to direct towards extremely specific economic development activities with certain, uh, types of ROI, uh, tied back to that. So increasing, uh, job base, uh, placemaking, diversifying the local economy, amplifying our business community, et cetera. Does that answer your question?
It, it does. So is, is a ten thousand dollar, uh, is that a large amount compared to the total? It doesn't sound like it's a large amount. It's kind of like, almost like a stipend. Is it, um, do our, our awards typically much larger than ten thousand? Um, can it give me a sense of what?
Yeah, well, I have about two years' experience with this fund, so I, I can speak to, uh, my direct experience. Generally, um, the chamber's sponsorship has been around ten thousand dollars. And then, uh, the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, I believe, is around thirty-five thousand dollars. And past that, uh, there are no other, um, large bites at, at that apple.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, all in all, um, my staff opinion would be this is a great value for this partnership.
Thanks, Megan, appreciate it.
Megan, isn't the money allocated on an application basis? It's, it's there to be applied for.
Yes.
Not used, and it, it's not used.
Correct, yes, thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Bruins. It is on an application basis, first come, first served. So, um, we do our best to share that opportunity, but it's up to an interested organization or party to complete an application.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, I think the, the, uh, the public comment was, was very well taken. Um, you know, at a time when we're not filling vacancies, we have budget issues and stuff like that, uh, we should really be, look, be looking to cut as much as we can. But I think it's very important for people to understand that with the federal, um, somewhat COVID relief bill that was passed, um, that is something that is going to help the city tremendously. We are looking at, uh, receiving millions of dollars from that. And, um, we will actually, in my opinion, be made whole and even better funded than pre-COVID. And so, I want people to understand that, um, even though we've done some things to kind of prop up our budget recently, it looks like we have relief coming for that. And only because of that will I support this, because again, I think it would not be prudent to be putting money out in other places if, if we were having problems in our own house here. So, um, I'm going to support it. Um, the partnership is, is, is no doubt very important to the city. Uh, the chamber is extremely important to the city. And so, i- it's a good partnership, it's a good use of funds. Um, but I just want to make sure people understand that, uh, money is coming to us, and, uh, this is not going to create, uh, an additional burden on us. That's it.
Thank you, and that's very similar to the thoughts I had during the, uh, Finance Committee meeting. Um, and Megan, uh, then explained, uh, a lot of the return on investment that we get from this. And it is just such a small amount, and what we, uh, receive in return is, is so huge to have an advocate for our businesses in our city. Um, and for the most part, volunteer. Um, so with that, uh, we've had a motion and a second, correct, Amy?
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
And Mayor Miller?
Aye.
The next item is Department Reports, number ten. The subject is the Police Department, twenty twenty Annual Report, given by Chief Lawrence.
Mayor Miller, members of City Council, I'm honored to be your police chief, and I'm pleased to present to you and to our community this evening our Police Department's Annual Report for calendar year twenty twenty. I want to recognize and thank Cassandra Burnett, our Management Analyst, who worked closely with our crime analyst, Dominic Cooper, to compile the statistics and data that I'm about to present to you. While these are year-end totals for last year, they, along with their amazing command, police command staff and management staff, worked diligently throughout the year analyzing crime and traffic collision trends, which informs us on how best to deploy our available resources on a daily basis. I want to express special thanks to our City Council, our City Manager, Christopher Boyd, all of our other city departments, and our Sacramento Metro Fire Department. Uh, the Police Department owes a, a great deal of our success to the support that we receive from other local government officials and staff working in collaboration with their Police Department. To our residents and our businesses, I also want to offer my sincere gratitude for your continued support and partnerships. We all witnessed many communities throughout our nation last year experienced civil unrest and anti-police movements. But our Citrus Heights community has always remained supportive of their local police department, and for this, we are extremely grateful. I've stated many times that CHPD does not police this community. We police with this community. And working together with you, we keep our businesses and our residents safe. Lastly, I want to express my sincere appreciation to the brave men and women of our Police Department who are responsible for the great work you're about to hear tonight. I continue to be absolutely proud of the professionalism, character, high caliber skill, and compassion of our police staff. Our team does amazing work, and our community deserves to be very proud of your Police Department. Calendar year twenty twenty brought unique challenges for all of us, and your Police Department did an outstanding job navigating through some very difficult circumstances. As the onslaught of worldwide pandemic caused the state of emergency in California, CHPD responded swiftly and appropriately to ensure staff remain safe from the virus while still maintaining crucial public safety to our city. In addition to impacts from the pandemic, nationwide protests and civil unrest persisted throughout much of the year, with some activists calling for defunding the police in their cities. Many protests across the nation were peaceful, while others led to widespread looting, property destruction, injuries, and even deaths. I'm pleased to report that our Citrus Heights community remained very supportive of their local police. And while a small few protests occurred in our city last summer, they remain lawful and peaceful. Towards the end of twenty twenty, the Police Department began reducing our police staff due to significant general fund budget reductions to the Police Department. The Police Department has managed the budget reduction by not filling vacant positions. I outlined to City Council during two-by-twos in December, as well as to the public during a public budget meeting with City Council on January twenty-eighth, what the impacts of those reduced services are as a result of fewer police staff. These reductions were not initiated until the end of last year, so the impacts are not reflected in the annual report that you're about to hear tonight, and they'll be realized in the current calendar year of twenty twenty-one. Despite all of the unique challenges last year, I'm amazed and proud of our police staff, who remain committed to maintaining the safest environment possible for our community. Our partnerships with businesses and residents is stronger than ever. Although our staff continues to do great work to reduce crime, and the reports you're about to hear for calendar year twenty twenty will highlight that Citrus Heights had a third year in a row of historically low crime rates. The reality is that the pandemic and subsequent quarantine order from the state appears to have played a big role in some of the shifting crime trends, which I'll explain tonight. Mayor Miller, on behalf of the professionals of CHPD, we're pleased to present this annual report to our community. The first slide you'll see is the Uniform Crime Stats. These are our crime stats that we report to the Department of Justice every year, as does every law enforcement agency in the United States. You'll see that there's eight categories. There's four-person crimes, homicide, rape, robbery, and aggravated assault, and four property crimes, burglary, larceny, which is theft, motor vehicle theft, and arson. Now, this is a busy slide, so I'm just going to focus in on, uh, a few pieces of it. If you look at the difference column, and you look at the yellow row, you'll see persons' crime totals. The difference between year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty was, uh, twenty-nine fewer person crimes, or crimes against persons. And then going lower, down to property crime totals, you'll see the difference between twenty twenty and twenty nineteen. There were a hundred and seventeen fewer property crimes, for a total of a hundred and forty-six fewer victims in Citrus Heights last year compared to twenty nineteen. In a minute, I'm going to break down some of those, particularly burglary, which you'll see there were thirty-one fewer burglaries and ninety-seven fewer larcenies, uh, which I'll explain on the next slide. So we had, in analyzing the, the crime from last year, we realized a reduction of thirty-one percent in residential burglaries. And in, in looking that, uh, at that statistic and analyzing- And in, in looking at that statistic and analyzing what we believe happened, it's clear that people being home during the quarantine was a result of fewer burglaries, because there were people home and therefore fewer residential burglaries. Conversely, you see we had an increase in commercial burglaries by 18%. It's because there were a lot of businesses that were closed and they were not staffed. And so therefore, they became crimes of opportunities with nobody there and no foot traffic. Our vehicle burglaries were down by 11%. Again, that's probably because fewer people were going to the gyms. They weren't working out. They were staying home. And so there was less vehicles parked around our city. Shoplifting likewise went down by 17%, simply because there were fewer shoppers because of businesses being closed. One piece that's alarming here, and that's vehicle parts accessories. And that includes things like theft from the outside of a car, license plates, gasoline from the gas tank, tires, rims, but particularly catalytic converters. The theft of catalytic converters has been a rash, not only in our region, but through our entire state, particularly in the Bay Area. And we've been working very closely with our allied partners on combating this crime. You'll see there, we had an increase of 468% in catalytic converter thefts in 2020. We had 205 thefts compared to only 35 in 2019. So there's actively a, a regional task force being put together to combat catalytic converter theft. These thieves will steal it. They steal it very quickly. And then they take the catalytic converter and they will take it to a scrapyard and get cash for the scrapped metal. The bottom half of this slide here, you'll see there the arson comparison. And that's because we did have a slight increase in arsons last year in 2020. And I wanted to break that down for you. One of them was homeless related, to somebody wanting to keep warm. We had four that were related to homelessness and those were, ended up being criminal investigations. Three of those arsons were related to domestic violence and were criminal investigations. And then there were six others that were somewhat random and not really tied to anything. In fact, one of them, you may recall, was a theft of an American flag from the front of somebody's house that later got burned and we found those suspects. It was a couple of teenagers that we got a confession from and an arrest. This slide shows our crime trends. This is our uniform crime reporting trend for the entire history of the Police Department. Now typically, when we look at crime trends, we'll only go back about five years because that's usually what's most useful. But because we're such a young agency, we only incorporated in June of 2006, which gives us the opportunity to have one slide that pretty much shows the entire history of your Police Department. And the nice thing about this slide is this clearly shows why it's so important that we have our own Police Department. You can see here how over the years since 2007, your Police Department, working with our community, have driven down crime year after year after year. And particularly the last three years, you can see there, we've had historic lows. Now, there's an asterisk by 2020, as I mentioned, because the pandemic, I believe, played a big role in some of those crime trends. But nonetheless, overall, since 2007, you can see our success here in fighting crime in Citrus Heights. Our traffic statistics here, and again, I'm just going to call your attention to the difference. And then about the middle of that slide, you'll see 2019 versus 2020 difference. The first row is fatalities. You'll see that we had three fatalities in 2020. We had zero in 2019. However, when you look back at years before 2019, year 2018, 2017, 2016, for a city our size with the amount of traffic that we have, 2020 was more in line with the average of previous years. Any fatality is tragic and we want to avoid them at all costs. And we try to do the best we can to enforce traffic laws and make sure that we're addressing those trends. But 2020, three, is more in line with the average. Injury collisions were down 50, by 55 collisions in 2020. And property collisions were down by seven, for a total of 59 fewer crashes in 2020 compared to 2019. Our Police Department issued 11,573 traffic-related citations last year. We had 291 DUI arrests and 80 DUI collisions. And 54 collisions were a result from red light traffic violations. This slide shows our entire history of our traffic collisions since 2007. And you can see here, when we first became Police Department, I know City Manager Boyd was the police chief. He'll be the first to tell you that one of the first things they tackled was traffic collisions, because there were a lot. And if you could see before we became a Police Department, I have no doubt that those bar graphs were much higher than what we see here. But you can see how our traffic enforcement, a focused effort, a strategic placement of our, of our traffic unit, has driven down traffic collision. And what's interesting about this slide is if you look about 2012, year 2012, you can see that the traffic collisions kind of flatlined. And you see the trend there, with the exception of 2016. They kind of float between 600 and 800 traffic collisions. And what that tells us is that with a city of our size, with a city with our type of roadways, our tier roadways, surface streets, with the amount of traffic that drives in and out of our cities, and with the amount of resources that we have for enforcement, you can probably guarantee that that trend line is going to continue between 600 and 800 collisions moving forward, if all things stay equal as they are today. This slide demonstrates some of our service statistics. The top left there, you see field operations. Our patrol calls were 46,341 times. That's, that's how many times people picked up the phone and called us for some type of help. There were 22,500 officer-initiated activities, which is when an officer stops a car or a pedestrian does something proactive. We weren't called to it. We did, we did it proactively. We made 890 felony arrests last year and 896 misdemeanor arrests. And those misdemeanor arrests are only about half of what we normally see. And because of the fewer misdemeanor arrests, that's another thing that we attribute to the pandemic. There were periods of time in the springtime and the early summer when the, the pandemic first struck that the jail, the county jail was actually having periods of time where they weren't taking any new arrests. So they, unless it was a felony arrest, they were not taking any misdemeanors. So you can understand why misdemeanor arrests are down. When we put all of our field operations incidents together, code enforcement, animal patrol, patrol, it's, we handled almost 75,000 total field incidents in the Police Department last year. That middle column there highlights our dispatch activity. And I really want to take a minute and highlight their work, because our dispatchers are, that's an extremely busy unit. If you've ever been in there, they, they really are handling of high volume of calls and dispatching of emergency resources, allied agency calls, 911 calls. You can see there, we handled 143,000 incoming calls, 57,500 of those were 911 calls. 72 of them were text to 911, which is a new program that only started a year or two ago. But it's something that we tend to do here. And I'll, I'm proud to say too, that we were one of the first agencies in our region to begin text to 911. And then the last thing there, you'll see there that we answered 911 calls in 15 seconds or less 97.12% of the time. What's important about this is the industry standard, the requirement is, that we answer 911 calls in less than 15 seconds 90% of the time. Well, your dispatch center is 97.12% of the time. And I'm proud to say they do a fantastic job at managing those calls for service. Our records unit handled 21,000 business calls, 4,200 patrons to our lobby. That's lower than average, too. Normally, we have about 13,000 to 15,000 people, but our lobby's been closed. Or we literally closed the lobby through the pandemic. It remains closed today. But we were still able to help our clients in the front parking lot. And I'm proud of our record supervisor Tiffany Campbell and her staff, who've done a great job at managing people who come to the Police Department for help, because we're still open for business and always have been through, through all of last year. Of course, they handled 10,000 cases approved and 1,300 online reports. Our volunteers, we sent home for most of the year, but we, we've brought some of them back now. But even despite that, they still were able to donate 5,000 hours of their personal time to the Police Department. And God bless them. They did a great job. We miss them. Most of them are still out. We want to get them back. And I'm looking forward to having them back into our family soon, because they really are a part of our fabric in our Police Department. And for any volunteers that are listening to this tonight, we miss you and we want you back soon. Last year in 2020, our dispatch center, we had our first full communication center evacuation drill. We did this in the event we needed to still maintain 911 communications in the event we needed to evacuate the police facility. And I'm very proud of our three police communication supervisors and their manager. That was quite the accomplishment. If you can imagine moving the entire unit out of the building and still being able to manage 911 calls is a pretty amazing objective that they met. Our traffic unit was successful in securing $161,000 Office of Traffic Safety Grant for DUI and traffic-related activities. They conducted 75 checkpoints and saturations to our city last year, which has helped reduce our DUI collisions. Our life-saving, we, we have a lot of life-saving methods here in Citrus Heights. Narcan is a fast-acting remedy for an opioid overdose. The department receives these doses from the county at a nominal cost. And our officers are trained on how to safely administer Narcan. And in 2020, we administered Narcan seven times on a total of five individuals. Of the five individuals who received Narcan, four of them were revived immediately and survived. And one was still unconscious when they were transported to the hospital. So remarkable work there, saving lives out there. And another one is the automatic external defibrillator, the AEDs. We went online with this in February of last year. We currently have 10 of them deployed in the field. In 2020, they were deployed on eight different occasions. Of those, there were three, what we call three field saves. And field saves are keeping the victims alive until fire or paramedics responded to take over life-saving measures. So proud to say that your Police Department is out there saving lives. The next slide, I'm not going to touch all of these things just for sake of time. But the top left then, one there, you see this is narcotics or illegal drugs that are booked into our property in evidence. Tremendous amount of work that goes on in our property in evidence. Our CSI folks do a great, great job in there maintaining that. The, the middle column there, you can see firearms taken off of our streets. Confiscated 131 firearms in our city. 12 of those were confiscated or called ghost guns. They didn't have any serial numbers associated with them. 46 of them were domestic violence-related confiscations. And then 22 were outside agency. And most of the outside agency ones were Detective Moran's, who's assigned to the United States Postal Service. And they interdict mail packages that come in with illegal items. 22, or many of those 22, were packages in the mail that contained illegal firearms. And then 33 were for safekeeping. We had 48 deployments of our bait program there in the middle, in the orange. And you're familiar with our bait program. This is property that we deploy throughout the city in high-crime areas that have detection devices where we're able to track down the felons that steal them and arrest them. We, we were successful at arresting 32 felons last year with our bait program. And then sideshows, I want to touch on this a little bit, because this is a growing trend in Northern California particularly, but all throughout our entire state. But our region's not immune to this. And car shows, they're, they're makeshift at the last moment, car rallies, and have picked up speed and popularity across the street and started showing up regularly towards the end of 2020 in our city. Sideshow's are typically people who take their vehicles to parking lots or streets with the intentions of showing off their cars and commonly do so in the middle of the street or in a, in a vacant parking lot. And they'll squeal their tires, do burnouts, do donuts, do dangerous street racing, drifting, which is, you know, the fishtail with their cars, and having unauthorized lighting and accessories affixed to their vehicles. It's oftentimes congregation causes traffic safety concerns, dangers to onlookers and pedestrians, and unnecessary traffic congestion in and around nearby streets and parking lots. Now, the Police Department, we've taken active stance to enforce traffic enforcement on these vehicles associated with sideshows. And our officers regularly communicate with our regional partners and the Highway Patrol on when and where we anticipate sideshows will arise. And we proactively patrol those areas to help discourage sideshows from forming. In 2020, we had five of those sideshows here in Citrus Heights. And since the beginning of 2021, we've already had six of them just in the past two and a half months. So there is a regional task force being formed to implement and help combat these crimes as well. On the next slide, you'll see our, this covers kind of our Youth and Family Services Unit. Our state grant, as Councilmember Bruins mentioned earlier in the evening, we're successful at securing a $600,000 grant. Thank you to Sergeant Schaefer and her team. Lieutenant Fry and the Youth and Family Services did a great job of getting that grant. This is our anti-tobacco and vaping outreach to youth and businesses. And it funds a police officer in that very fancy truck there you see, goes out to the schools and educates our youth. And our Youth and Family Services Program maintains our explorers. They do a great job. And this year, we were honored to recognize three of them who began college or joined the military from our, our explorer program. Our very successful pathway program at Mesa Verde High School, in June, we, we graduated nine students, all of whom were females this year. Very proud of all nine of them. Our Police Activities League hosted several events throughout the city, included rock and, rock and jump with over 65 attendees. And unique to Citrus Heights Youth and Family Services last year was what we called birthday brigades. And because of the pandemic, our Police Department felt the need to really connect with our kids and our youth. And they were, we wanted to find unique ways to do that. So we celebrated 20 different children's birthdays. These were people who reached out to us and said, my, my child is having a birthday. They love the police. Can you just swing by? And so I'm proud of our patrol teams and our Youth and Family Services teams who really kind of put this together. Obviously, it's time, when time permitted, to do it. But our officers were proud to do that and be a part of that and kind of outreach to our kids in a, in a very unique way. And then, of course, we had our National Read to Kids Day this year, where department members, members took time to read to kids. Some of those were virtual. This slide shows our work at code enforcement. We had over 1,200 code enforcement cases last year. Our rental housing inspection unit, which is, as you know, a new unit we started, they investigated 534 houses, uncovering over 1,500 violations. And I want to highlight that for just a minute, because this program has been wildly successful. These are often tenants who are afraid to speak out. Some of them, English is not their first language. Some of them don't know how to get help if they've got violations in their apartment or their rental unit. And sometimes the, the tenants, or I mean, the landlords don't know what the violations are. So there's a communication gap. And this unit has really done a great job of working to collaboratively get these violations fixed. And it's not a, it's not a heavy-handed response. Our initial response is to really work with the landlords and try to get them to get their housing units up to, up to code and to make sure that our housing stock here in Citrus Heights is healthy, so it's vibrant and, and a good place to live. And, and what we found is that the landlords and tenants both appreciate these types of, of inspections. You see some photos there before and after of some of the great work our code enforcement has done. Animal Services handled over 3,800 calls for service and licensed over 2,200 animals. And in the middle of the screen there, you see our Navigator program, very successful, continues to be successful. Our Navigator, she handled housing and transitional housing, over 100 people there, 106 people were housed, assisted 43 with people getting ID cards, 43 bus passes. We helped four veterans last year. Now, the little block in the middle there, I want to spend a little time on the, in the, the purple box, mental health. We have our mobile crisis support team. And this is our mental health professional, it's an advocate with, with the county, who rides with one of our police officers four days a week. Great program. And so when we have a mental health crisis, if that team is available, they go to the call. We had 248 referrals. And what's nice is it's not just a go to the call and handle it. That mental health professional is able to work a case management with that individual and help them long-term to hopefully get them the, to the right services and help that they need. In totality, last year, we had 348 mental health holds. Now, I'll share with you that right now, the police chiefs in our county are working with the county Health Department, the Health and Human Services, on what potentially will be a non-police response to mental health crisis calls, nonviolent, non-criminal calls that currently come into our 911 center. And because the, the resources from mental health are just not there, our police officers tend to be the de facto resource that goes out there. But the Health and Human Services is working on a plan and funding through the county to work with us and partner with us on responding to these calls so that the police don't have to be burdened with non-criminal, nonviolent calls. So more to come on that, but I think that's a step in the right direction. In the middle of the screen there, the bottom, you see our unmanned aerial systems, our UASs or our drones. We currently have six of them in service. We have 11 certified pilots, 65 hours were logged last year in 2020 with 437 flights. Huge, huge benefit to us. They can go to critical scenes, barricaded subjects, fatality, traffic collisions. They can help us be up in the eyes, in the air without the expense of a helicopter. And then I'll touch on our pop team real quick. Of course, you know what they do. We don't have all the numbers here, because the slide would be way too busy. They do so much work, but they do fantastic work. You heard about some accolades for Sergeant Semino and the pop team earlier tonight. I want to talk about Officer Shoutin, who's a contract officer with the Sunrise Marketplace. That contract began in 2020. And Officer Shoutin has done just tremendous work out there at the Sunrise Marketplace, reducing crime, making sure that all of the security groups are talking to one another. They, they function as a team, so there's communication between the businesses and the different security firms and our Police Department. And they've just done some remarkable work out there. So very proud of that program and the work he's done. And the next slide, you'll see this is, again, we were faced with some challenges with the pandemic last year. pandemic last year, but we still wanted to outreach to our community. And I'm very proud of our Youth and Family Services and our Police Activities League, who continue to do some great things. We had reverse trunk-or-treat, which was a drive-through Halloween event where kids were able to drive through in a very pandemic-safe manner. We were able to still enjoy Halloween with our local community kids. And Miracle on Fountain Square was another great program that Sergeant Schaefer and the Youth and Family Services Team put together with our PAL that allowed our community to celebrate the holidays and Christmas time. And if you think back, by the end of the calendar year, people were just desperate for some type of community engagement and event. And I'm proud to say that your police department was able to facilitate that and offer some of those things. Our holiday referral program was still pulled off. Tiffany Campbell and many of our staff did an amazing work benefiting over 250 citizens. 27 families were adopted, hundreds of toys and gifts donated to the Signora Center, $5,000 in cash and gift cards were donated and shared. And of course, our popular Shop With a Cop was continued with a great donation from Walmart. And we were able to do that. It was different, because we didn't actually shop with the kids in the store this year, but we were able to do kind of a drive-through Shop With a Cop and still pull that program off. So in that, you know, our staff just are very creative. You tell our police staff the mission, and they are very creative at getting it done. And I'm proud to say that the mission accomplished. We saw some retirements last year, four of them. Sergeant, Master Sergeant James Evans retired after 26 years of service in policing. Julia Lavanino, Records Assistant, after 35 years of service. Michelle Drake, Detective, retired after 19 years of service. And one of our police canines, Axel, retired after four years of service. So we're at a time in our history of our police department where we're starting to see our retirements increase. So it's bittersweet, but it's always happy to see them ride off into the next chapter of their lives. And then lastly, we had some promotions. Nicole Garing was promoted to Lieutenant. Jeremy Garrison to Master Sergeant, Kyle Showberg to Sergeant. We had two reserve officers that were promoted to police officer, Chase Faithy and Dennis Wimmenhurst. And then on the right side of your screen there, you'll see corporals. Now, this is a new program to Citrus Heights. It's not a rank. It's a specialty assignment. But this is part of our succession planning here in Citrus Heights. We created this program in our non-sworn, the professional staff side of our police department. These are our records clerks, our dispatch, our CSI. We have a similar level called seniors, and they're able to be kind of an assistant to the supervisor. Our corporals do the same thing. They're assistants to the supervisor. But it allows the corporals to experience some leadership and be prepared for that next step in their leadership career. So you see there, the six individuals who have been assigned to the corporal position. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions that your council might have.
Thank you for the great presentation. I'm so proud of the men and women of the Citrus Heights Police Department. I don't think words would do it any justice. So with that, I'd open it up for questions to the council members. And I'm sure statements were all.
I have a comment, Mayor?
Go ahead, Tim.
Thank you, Chief Lawrence, for a well-done presentation. And I have to make a, I'm a little embarrassed that I referred to Sergeant Semino as Officer Semino. No offense intended there, Seth. I'm sure you worked very hard for that, for that rank. So again, well done to the chief. And I'm so proud of the Citrus Heights Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you for your presentation, Chief Lawrence. I think it's so important for us to see all that you do. And so much of it is done, not always in the public eye, but it's the foundation of what provides our police department to have the level of success that you have. And I love your statement that you don't police our community, you police with our community. And I would say to a person that we agree with that statement. And it's, we still stand out, as far as I know, within the state of California, having the most innovative, creative, and effective police department around. And so I just want to thank you for your leadership and for how you have advanced the careers of the people that report to you. It's exciting to see an officer that starts as a police officer come up through the ranks. And over the years, I've had the pleasure of seeing that. I'm always sad when they leave, when they retire. But the fact that we shed tears over that is another sample of the evidence of how much we love our police department, all the men and women that give up their lives daily for the protection of our community. So thank you and thanks to all of them for all that they do.
Thank you.
I'll go next. Let me just say, it's remarkable, but not surprising. You know, there's just about no greater calling than law enforcement, because without law and order, you don't have society. And so, and in this day and age, it's a tough job. And so I'm extremely proud of those that want to do it and do it so well. There's so much in this presentation that could be called out as just incredible examples of the difference in what we have today in Citrus Heights and what we had before we became a city. It's just remarkable. And we do have people, and you know, it's all about what we want and what we tolerate. And so that's a good thing. But we still have people that I think either didn't live here or just don't know that difference. And so what we have today is something that is off-the-chart better than what we had before we became a city. And I'll just call out one thing, and that's 97% of 911 calls, 57,000 of those, 97% answered in less than 15 seconds is remarkable. When you're dialing 911, you want somebody to answer the phone immediately. And every second just seems like forever. And so I'm extremely proud that the city can do such a thing. And I just want to thank the chief and thank all of the members of the department. You are remarkable, and we are very blessed to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll offer a couple of comments.
Oh, go ahead.
Chief, as usual, your department, from the PAL program to the Shop With a Cop, to our drones, and now you're leaving the message of you're following up with the whole mental health and why it's so important to address that in a safe manner. I cannot thank you enough for your innovation and for being a leader at the forefront of these kind of issues and really looking for solutions that are going to help benefit everyone in our community. I greatly and deeply appreciate the work that you and all the officers do.
Thank you.
Yes, they've said it all. Thank you very much, Chief, for a great report. I look forward to another good report in a year from now. I think we have the talent and the resources to take care of it. Even under a doomsday scenario, I had great faith that you guys would figure out a way to get the bad guys and lock them up. So, you know, hopefully, we may not have to go there, but I can't promise that until I see a check from the federal government. So we do have to prepare for the worst. And that's what our police department does and hope for the best. And this is great. It sure beats one sheriff's car between here and Rio Linda every night. And with that, we'll move on to the next item, please. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
The next item is City Manager Items.
Yes, good evening, Council. Chris Boyd, the City Manager. And just a couple of things. Of course, following that presentation, I too want to make sure that I offer my sincere congratulations and gratefulness to the men and women of the CHPD. It's, you know, no secret. I'm heavily invested with each and every one of them. Probably hired most of them. And I just, you know, I just thank the world of them. And that really shined through tonight. But I particularly wanted to really thank and acknowledge Chief Lawrence, extraordinary leader. You're not going to find a better police chief anywhere in law enforcement. We're very blessed to have you, Chief. And you just do an extraordinary job. So congratulations and thank you. Just a couple other things, Council. I just wanted to let everyone know that we're looking forward to restarting our strategic planning efforts next week. So our strategic planning efforts were put on hold, of course, during the pandemic, to concentrate on our response to the pandemic. But now that things have allowed us to do so, we're looking forward to restarting our planning process. So we'll be creating our new long-term planning goals for the next three years. That will be really tailored, I think, to whatever we think our new normal is going to be. So the council and the staff will be joining together on Zoom on March 16th and be reporting out the results of the council's work there. And it's been touched on earlier, but as of today, we heard from Sacramento County that we're getting very close to being able to change to the red tier. If they do change the equity measurements at the state level, we may move to the red tier faster, we're hearing. So there's movement on this, but this hasn't happened yet. And also, the state has relaxed really the definition of case rate measurement for assigning tiers for those purposes. So this should make the measurements better, so we can get to this next tier and get, kind of get on with opening up our community. So that's, you know, hopefully, good news is on the horizon here. So Mayor, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chris. Next item, please.
Next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
And not hearing anything. The next item I see on my agenda is adjournment. So I'd like to close the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor.
You don't have to go home. You just can stay here.